Oh, I know.
I'm going to go ahead and call this meeting to order. This is an assembly regular meeting for January 4, 2022. And it's 6:00 PM. Madam Clerk, would you take the role?
Tim Hale.
Here.
Stephanie Nowers.
Here.
Dee McKee. Robert Yount. Moki Tu.
Here.
Jesse Sumner.
Here.
Ron Bernier.
Here.
You do have a form.
Thank you. Is there any members who would like to pull from the consent agenda? Are there any changes to the agenda? Hearing none, the agenda is approved as presented. You'll all stand, and Deputy Mayor, will you lead us in the pledge, please?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
On the minutes of the preceding meeting, is there any changes to the minutes that were presented? Okay, hearing none, the minutes are approved and presented. Agency reports this evening. I don't see anybody from either city, any one of the three cities. Okay, thank you. We have a report from the school district. Okay. Do we have a report or don't see?
Todd's listening on mine.
Is he? Okay, great, thank you. And not think there's any update on the school issues. Is that correct? Some, okay. And are there any public relations reports? Okay, Mr. Brown, you have a report?
I do, thank you, Madam Mayor. Good evening. So I'm going to start, we're going to give an update to this severe winter storm, the high winds that we've been experiencing here in the Matu Valley. So I'll begin by saying that yesterday, the governor did approve a disaster declaration in the afternoon, and I'll read a couple of excerpts from their press release today. But Governor Dunleavy declared the 2021-2022 Alaska winter storm a state disaster on January 3 in response to numerous impacts from extreme cold weather, high winds, freezing rain, and heavy snow file fall. These conditions interrupted power and water distribution, damaged public buildings and homes, restricted travel, and required communities to establish shelter locations for displaced residents. The January 3 declaration activates the state's individual assistance program, which is designed to help individuals and families with damages and/or expenses related to the disaster event. This applies to the Matu Borough, of course, and a number of other municipalities up to our north. Disaster, or folks that have been impacted by the disaster can register for state individual assistance program by visiting the State of Alaska's Division of Homeland Security and Emergency Management website at ready.alaska.gov. That registration opened today, January 4, and will be open, or the registration deadline will be through March 4 of this year. So there is also a phone number. This information will be shared on the Borough website and on Facebook and pushed out to the community. So you'll hear us talking a lot about that. The State of Alaska is also going to be pushing through their mechanisms. But thanks to the declaration by the state, approved by the governor, this will open up that assistance program for residents of the borough. Also, in addition to that, the declaration provides access to the Alaska Army National Guard. They've got some personnel and vehicles staged at the Alcantra National Guard Armory in Wasilla on standby to assist us with ground evacuation operations for any citizens that might be isolated and needing transportation to warming shelters to conduct traffic management and pilot car operations, should they be needed due to drifting snow. So we do have that support from the state as well. That's been mobilized in support of local authorities. Also, the Borough offices and facilities were open today. That includes the landfill, the actually, the winds dissipated enough to allow for that to occur as well. Schools were closed today and will be closed again tomorrow in the Matu Borough. And the school district announced that earlier today, and will make an announcement for the following day by noon tomorrow. We did have one change in the shelter in Palmer. We moved it from the Matu Senior Services Center to Palmer Junior Middle School last night. So that's been put in place and is there for residents on this side of the valley. Just to highlight, just wanted to hit the weather again real quick. As of Monday, and this really comes from the National Weather Service, they were talking about the Matu Borough had seen 48 hours of sustained wind, making it the fourth longest strong wind event in the area, comparable to the third largest that occurred in February of 1979, with 51 hours of strong winds. That's a quote from Aviva Braun. Obviously, we'll see where that lands, because we continue to experience strong winds, sustained strong winds, beyond yesterday morning. What I wanted to highlight there is that we may have wind chill values 20 to 35 degrees below zero. These winds could be dangerous and life-threatening for those without power, as frostbite can develop in as little as 15 minutes in these conditions. So we want to continue to encourage folks to be cautious, especially considering the lingering events as winds dissipate. So even though the winds may start to fall off and power may be restored, we still want to caution folks to be mindful that with these cold temperatures, there's still risk out there not to let their guards down. At this time, I'm going to invite Jennifer Castro from MEA to come up and provide an update on their restoration efforts.
Sorry, my notes are starting to look like this. All right. So I am pleased to let you guys know that in less than, or a little over 24 hours of reporting from here yesterday, where we had about 18,000 folks still without power, we've gotten that number down to 6,300 members without power. And that's really all to the amazing work of our line crews and these assisted crews that have come in to help support us through this unplanned event. And so I really would like to acknowledge the crews and the assistants from Golden Valley Electric, Chugatch Electric, and our contract crews from NPC, EPC, ALB, and Sturgeon. So in addition to our in-house line crews, they've all been working together, coordinating together, and working in 16-hour shifts with eight-hour breaks, and just trying to tackle all sorts of different locations that are without power across our service territory. To give you kind of some more recent updates here, I know a lot of folks have been inquiring about Lazy Mountain. There was definitely some extensive damage located up there with four broken poles. Earlier, we were hoping for the goal to have folks turned back on by 6:00 PM tonight, but we are not quite there yet. And so we believe that we'll have the upper half of Lazy Mountain restored, most likely around 10:00 PM, and then the remaining lower half around 2:00 AM this morning is what we're shooting for with that now. We have crews on site in Big Lake. We have a lot of smaller outages up there impacting folks. We also have a crew heading back up to Talkeetna to resolve the remaining outages up there. We will try to get another crew out up to Sutton this evening. We had a crew up in Jonesville Road last night working on tap outages, and then they had to go on break. We also have crews situated all over kind of the Palmer area, Wasilla off Bogard. We still have a lot of folks out over there, off Lucille, Sheldon. We do have more concentrated efforts working on an outage impacting folks off of Shrock. Just, and that's also impacting folks off of Carney Road up there. And so kind of how we're prioritizing outages at this point is we are saying the longest and the largest. And so gathering folks, we are hoping that we have most of the folks that have been off since Saturday resolved this evening overnight, and then still patching up outages that occurred on Sunday. We believe that with the pace that we're on right now and on track with, that we will have everybody back on with power by Friday evening. So I've kept asking our dispatch supervisor, are you sure about that? Because you'd never want to overpromise and, you know, underdeliver kind of thing. So, but he is confident that at this rate, at this pace, and with the way that the winds are dying down and giving us those gains, that we are on track to get every member off, or I'm sorry, restored, that's off right now, restored back on by Friday. If it is a situation where we don't have everyone back on by Friday, we will continue to work through the weekend until we have every last member turned back on. So we also want to remind folks, I mean, we've been getting hundreds of photos of trees on the lines all throughout the service territory, and we are so thankful for that helpful information and giving us the location information. We are not going to be able to get to every single tree on the lines right now. The priority is getting the power back on, and then we'll work on all of that tree removal and debris next. So thank you for the reports. Keep giving us those reports. We've got the nice list going, and we will get to those eventually as well. Our phone lines, it sounds like folks are getting a better hold of being able to get ahold of someone today. We've gone through all of our voicemails and gotten that down so that people can leave messages now. And we also are trying to get as responsive as we can be to all of our Facebook messages. We've been getting about three messages a minute on our Facebook page. So going through all of those and just trying to be as responsive to people as much as possible, also directing folks that have been out, that have, you know, 30-degree homes right now, directing them over to the Palmer Shelter Resource as well as the Menard Center Resource so that they can get warmed up, have access to facilities and power. So that's kind of where we're at right now. I can try to answer any questions if folks have any, but we're going to keep chipping away until we've got this fixed and everyone's back on.
Okay, Assemblyperson Nowers.
Thank you. Through the mayor, just wanted to say a shout out in addition to the line crews, to Jennifer and the communication staff. It's been amazing from the outage map that's updated every five minutes to the Facebook posts that are going through the night. And, you know, I know people have wanted stuff to be done quicker, but the communication, I remember the old days where you'd call on the phone and then you would just wait.
Yeah.
So it's really, it's really great, and I'm sure you guys have gotten no sleep, and I hope get some rest after this.
Thanks. Any other questions I can help answer right now?
No.
All right.
But thank you again for coming.
All right, thanks.
Thank you, Jennifer. So I'm going to invite up Ken Barkley, our Director of Emergency Services, for an update on operational matters related to response and recovery.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Assemblymembers and staff. Ken Barkley, Director of Emergency Services. Does it kind of go over some things that we've covered so far, what we've been working on and what's happened so far in the borough? First thing I want to cover, for any road hazards, if anyone has any trees down or needs to be removed, the hotline number for that is 907-861-7755. Our call center, which is operational 24/7, for anybody having any immediate needs or emergencies, So anything, please use those numbers if you have any concerns for that. To date, I had my notes for, we were at, since Sunday evening to right now, 500 calls. It's actually more than that since I got here. But that's just what Fire and EMS has responded to, over 500 calls. Dispatch has taken over 800 calls since that time. Most of those calls and most of the responses is from Palmer Fire and Central Matu. They're the two areas that were hit the most with the windstorm, and they're the ones. Lakes has had some, Lakes Fire, which covers Big Lake and Lakes area, they've had a lot going on in their area as well, but they've also been moving in and helping Wasilla. Butte Fire has moved up and been helping Palmer on their side, taking a lot of their calls, just to give the crews some relief and to do change out and switch outs with crews. Most of our calls are down power lines, arcing, sparking fires from that. We've had at least five commercial buildings that are damaged. Some maybe beyond repair. Some have blown the back hole walls out of commercial buildings. We've had bay doors literally blown in on the structures. We had one facility here in Palmer, the glass blew in. It was the hotel restaurant here in Palmer, and there were some injuries, all minor, from the glass when that happened. So we have that. RV lots, the one by Sore Meridian in Palmer Wasilla, a lot of those RVs all are pushed into each other, slid into each other. No injuries there. We have airport in Palmer, a lot of aircraft are damaged. Wasilla has a few at their airport that are damaged as well. So there's going to be a lot of recovery efforts. Talk about the shelters. Right now, the one at Junior Middle Palmer, in Palmer is open 24/7, and then the one at Menard. The one at Junior Middle may change just because if school opens, then we may have to move it, we're not sure yet. It depends on the number of folks that are using the shelters. Right now, we have eight at the Menard Center and five at the Junior Middle in Palmer. That's how many people are in the shelters right now. So if that number is less, then we may not have to be 24/7, and the one in Palmer, just so everyone's aware, it may move. If it does, it'll be on the Borough webpage as we're getting ready to do that, so you'll know. One of the biggest requests we've had today was bottled water, and that's from John Mousie, the City of Palmer's manager. And we were able to, Casey Cook, our emergency manager, who's with me, through his efforts and working with, believe it or not, Department of Forestry, and working with the guard, and working with O and M from the borough, they managed 10 pallets of water. It turns out, they found out that the forestry had a bunch of water stored. So we borrowed that. And with the help of O and M with their trucks, the National Guard, we were able to move it over to the ice arena to get it over to the MTA building, and that's what they're doing tonight at 7 o'clock. So they'll have all that water there, and then they'll work on distributing it to the residents for the City of Palmer that need it. So that was the big one. The other one is propane bottles, the smaller size for heating and torching. We're having difficulty getting those, but we're working on that. But that was a problem before the windstorm. So those are the two big things that we're working on right now. And thanks to their proclamation, we're able to utilize the National Guard, so that's going to be critical to our operation. Some of the urgent cares are closed. They're not open right now, and they probably won't be tomorrow. What that does is it puts more burden on the hospitals. So just so you're aware of that, the hospitals are extremely busy, and we haven't had a lot of injuries, that's the good news. But with the urgent cares not opening right now, it makes more for testing for COVID and so on. That is on our Borough webpage. I believe Stefan Hibman put that on there tonight. So if anybody needs COVID testing or vaccinations, look at the webpage before you go there or make a phone call, because the place that you've been going may not be open right now. So the Sears I know is not open. That's a big one that a lot of us go to and have. So that one's not open right now. I want to give some shout-outs, you know, the folks that are out there with emergency services, a lot of them haven't slept, and they're out there working hard to make sure we've answered every 911 call. There's not one 911 call that hasn't been answered. But more importantly is we can't do our job without support. O and M has been phenomenal. We had buildings out of power, generators that didn't start. We couldn't get fire trucks out. We had busted pipes, you know. All those things were handled immediately. It didn't delay our responses at all. So they've been working around the clock. So I want to give them a big shout-out to O and M and Public Works for working with us hand-in-hand, side-by-side, and getting to our needs to make, to help us respond to the emergencies of our citizens. MEA, as you know, has been fantastic, getting the power up. Casey Cook, our emergency manager, has been in contact with them, and we had some senior home facilities with no power for quite a while. And we were able to talk with MEA and put that a little bit more to the priority list to get them power. A lot of them are on oxygen and needed assistance. So that's been great. And our citizens, you know, for helping out, letting us know what their needs are and trying to stay home. Shelter in place was the big one. So we want to give a big shout-out to them. The other two is, I want to talk to a little bit, is Peyton and IT. He's been phenomenal. There's our call center. We need to get the phone transferred. We've never done that before because of the way that it comes in. It's got seven lines, but we need to transfer it to one line. I was told it couldn't be done, and he did it. And it was critical to our operation. So a shout-out to him. Me and the manager had some printer problems, and Peyton was able to show us which button to push. And Jesse at O and M, just, I mean, we've been calling on him 24/7 with some of the emergencies we had to get to the response to the emergency that we were called for. So a big shout-out to them, and again, it's just about teamwork, and that's how we survive in this business. Safety message I have tonight is the calls that were going on are exposures and hypothermia. If you're home, you don't have power, you don't have heat, don't wait. Call. Call the hotline, call us now. We can get you to a shelter. The National Guard will come and get you and take you to a shelter. So please, if you're having problems, concerns, and you're still sitting at home with no power or heat, call, call the call center. We will get there, and we will get you help immediately. Oxygen, if you're surviving on oxygen, please don't wait till you're low. You know, if you don't have an extra bottle sitting there, call us, let us know. We will help you. We will get you the oxygen, or we will get you to a place to get the oxygen. Those are the calls that we're getting, and when we get them, it's dire emergency. Well, I haven't been able to breathe for a while. Well, that's kind of important. So we like to, we like to know early so we can get to you. CO calls, that's probably one of our top right now, is improper use for heating. A lot of folks are using their stove, they're opening the door on their stove and turning it on, and that's what they're heating with. We had a gentleman, it was almost three days, that's how he was heating his house. Almost didn't make it. Luckily, somebody checked on him. The biggest one we're getting is generators. Do not run your generator in your house. Do not run your generator in the garage. It will get you. It's colorless, odorless, tasteless. You won't know it. You'll get a little bit of a headache, you'll get tired, you'll lay down. That might be it. There's a family of six that that happened to yesterday. Three of them, we didn't think were going to make it, and they all survived. They had the generator running in the garage, which was attached to the house. I can't stress it enough, do not run the generator in your home. That's all I have. If anybody has any questions for me, I'd be glad to answer them.
Through the mayor. What's the capability, so the Palmer Middle, how many, they have five, and Menard has eight, but how many can they house if needed?
Menard's over 50 or 60. Do you have the counts, Casey, with you? What they can handle? At Menard? 100 apiece, so 200.
Thank you.
And we, that's just those two shelters. We have several on our list. It's just those are the ones that we're utilizing right now.
And then the, if somebody needs a ride to one of those places, the National Guard will come get them. Which number is that? Is that the 7755 or the 7900?
79.
7900, okay. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
All right, we'll wrap this update up then. You know, the printer thing's kind of something Ken and I were laughing at when we were standing there in 43-degree inside. But it's kind of hard to ask the mayor to sign a disaster declaration when you can't print it. It's a real thing, folks. So I did want to provide an update for residents out there and for the Assembly as well on landfill and transfer site fees. Per the authority afforded to the manager under an emergency, we are waiving the construction and demolition or C and D fees for the landfill and transfer sites for residential customers only. This waiver will not apply to commercial accounts. The waiver will be in effect tomorrow, January 5, through the close of business Sunday, January 16. This waiver is in, excuse me, is intended to encourage the proper and timely disposal of waste and assist local residents who experience damage and loss to their personal property from this severe winter storm. The borough already accepts free disposal of brush and woody debris, and residents are welcome to bring down trees, limbs, and brush to the landfill or to transfer site. So hopefully, this will help folks out. The landfill opened this afternoon, and we had some reports, folks, that's what we saw folks bringing in was predominantly C and D. So that fee will be waived through January 16, and that'll be available to folks starting tomorrow. And then lastly, I also want to extend our thanks to MEA, our first responders and folks, Public Works, IT. There's been a lot of folks working in the background to help to respond to, and I'm really thankful to the governor for approving that disaster declaration. It opens up a lot of resources for us as a community, and we'll be sure to take advantage of that. So thank you, Madam Mayor, that's all I have this evening.
Mr. Attorney, do you have a report?
Sure. Not a whole lot to report. I'll just give you a brief redistricting update. I don't think we needed an executive session tonight. There's no real strategy or anything to talk about. Earlier, when we were having our 3 o'clock meeting, we got a fourth amended pre-trial order, just kind of laying out how trial is going to work and a bunch of administrative things. As you know, there are five separate lawsuits, which means there are five separate plaintiffs, one defendant, and then an intervenor on the defendant's side so that you're carving up time and who's doing what. Trial is set for January 21, which is extremely, extremely, extremely fast. It's because there's a court rule that says that the opinion is supposed to be issued 90 days before candidate filing. The Supreme Court relaxed that date and said that the opinion can be issued by February 15 instead of February 1, but it's still moving very, very quickly. So I've been talking with outside counsel. We're lining up our witnesses and affidavits and getting everything together. There's tens of thousands of pages of discovery that each sides are, all the sides are going through. So a lot going on with that right now. That's all I have.
Thank you. Questions? Madam Clerk, do you have a report?
Yes, the clerk's report is in your red folder. It has the upcoming meetings and the quasi-judicial report. And also, just to remind the Assembly, we do have a meeting, a joint meeting with the state delegation on Friday. It starts at 10:00 AM, however, breakfast will be served at 9:30.
And that's at the LIO?
That's at the LIO over in Wasilla, yes.
Okay, any questions? Okay. The next item is the agency. The next item is the agency, citizens and other correspondents. There's a number of items there. Does anybody have any comments on any of those? Okay, hearing none, they are presented. Madam Clerk, would you read the IMs into the record, please?
IM 22013 reporting the conclusion of contract for bid 21110B with Northern Asphalt Construction Incorporated for a final contract amount of $361,398.84 for the marble way improvement project.
Are there any comments on the IMs? Hearing none, the IMs are presented. We do not have any persons to be heard. Okay, now we are in public hearings. Madam Clerk, would you, let's see, let me ask first, do we have people online for testimony? Caleb? Okay, thank you.
Ordinance 22004 and ordinance approving the timeline extension for long range transportation planning project account. If you're on the phone and would like to speak to this, press star three.
Okay, first we'll see your staff report.
Good evening, Mayor DeBries and members of the assembly. Tonight, this will be a quick one. I hope we are asking for a project account extension to be extended till 2025, June 30th, 2025. This project account funds were set aside for long range transportation planning activities, specifically to update the long range transportation plan and to complete a couple of project chapters that were identified in the 2017 plan but were not completed, the bike and pedestrian plan and the transit plan. Funds in this account were also set aside to provide match to grants that we may receive to do long range transportation planning. So because we are hoping to update the long range transportation plan this year, it's now five years old, we're not going to rewrite the whole plan. It'll just be an update of the projects that have been completed and we'll add new projects to the list to to be completed in the future. And then we'd also like to complete the bike and pedestrian plan and the transit plan. And we think completing all those plans will take more, they'll span multiple years. So we're asking for the account to be extended till June 30th, 2025.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm going to go ahead and open the public hearing on ordinance 22-004. Anyone in the audience that would like to give testimony to the assembly upon this ordinance, you're welcome to come forth at this time. Okay, see, no one come forth. Caleb is the person, no. Okay. One last chance for anybody from the audience to come forth? No? Okay. So I'm going to go ahead and close public hearing. And Deputy Mayor Sumner, would you?
I move to adopt ordinance 22-004.
Is there any discussion? Okay, is there any objection? Hearing no objection, the legislation is now passed. Madam Clerk?
Ordinance 22005 and ordinance approving land classifications of six borough owned parcels for purpose of identifying and guiding future use and development of said parcels. You're on the phone and would like to speak to this, press star three.
Thank you. That's all right. Staff report, please. Thank you.
Madam Mayor?
I like the sound of that, Mr. Manager and the assembly. I feel like this is kind of underwhelming after everything that we've been going through and discussing this evening, but it's pretty simple. We have six borough parcels that we just need to classify for future use for public facilities. One is for a proposed park in Caswell Lakes area. There's not many for developing, but we'd like to set it aside for future use. And then there are three borough parcels along the Parks Highway that the Department of Emergency Services would like to reserve for future fire stations and training facilities. And that will help close those gaps that are existing right now along the Parks Highway. And again, I don't know that there's funding or plans for development, but we're just setting these aside for the time being. And then the last one is an ag parcel, actually, over by, off the Parks Highway by this Big Sioux River. And we have a commercial lease on the northern piece of it. And then the rest of it, we would like to classify or continue using it as agricultural use and potentially put it in an ag cell in the future. That's kind of it in a nutshell in five minutes or less.
Come on, sir, questions? Okay. Oh, I'm sorry, assembly person.
I move to adopt ordinance 22 dash.
Remember, we need to have the public hearing served first. Thank you. Okay, I'll go ahead and open the public hearing on ordinance 22-005. If there's anyone in the audience that would like to come and address the assembly on this piece of legislation, please come forth. I don't see anybody. Caleb, man, we do not have anybody online. Okay, so I'm going to go ahead and close the public hearing. Recognize you, sir.
Hi, I move to adopt ordinance 22-005.
Okay, is there any discussion? Is there any objection? Okay, hearing no objection, the legislation passes. Okay, Madam Clerk?
Ordinance 22006 and ordinance accepting and appropriating $68.72 in interest income to Federal Cares Relief Act Project Fund with accompanying resolution 22001, a resolution amending the scope of work and budget to account for interest income generated from the Federal Cares Relief Act Project Fund.
I'm going to go ahead and open the public hearing. Anyone present that would like to testify in ordinance 22-006, please come forth. Seeing no one, no, and nobody online. Okay, with that, I'll close the public hearing. And Deputy Mayor?
I move to adopt ordinance 22-006 and resolution 22-001.
Okay, is there any discussion? Okay, is there any objection? Okay, hearing no objection, the legislation passes. Madam Clerk?
Ordinance 22007 and ordinance appropriating 8 million from the area wide fund balance to roads and bridges capital projects fund to begin work on projects approved by borough voters on November 2nd, 2021. With accompanying resolution 22002, a resolution approving the scope of work and budget for transportation projects as directed by the assembly and ratified by the voters on November 2nd, 2021. And if you're on the phone and would like to speak to this, press star three.
Is your staff report, sir?
I'll invite Ms. Wyland up. It's pretty straightforward, though.
You have to turn it on. There you go, you're good now.
Yeah, okay, sorry. Hi, my name is Lisa Wyland. I'm the Borough Comptroller, Mayor, Madam Mayor and Assembly. This is just $8 million that is unassigned to area wide fund balance, which was savings generated from the cares money that we received in FY '21. So that's where this money is coming from and we're just putting it toward the transportation projects.
Okay, thank you. Now we'll go ahead and open the public hearing on ordinance 22-007 and resolution 22-002. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to testify any of one of these pieces of legislation? Okay, see, no one, nobody online. I will go ahead and close the public hearing. And Deputy Mayor?
I move to adopt ordinance 22-007 and resolution 22-002.
Okay, is there any discussion? Yes, assembly person, Young, go ahead, sir.
Through the mayor, I just wanted to put some quick math out there. If this passes, it'll put us at 27% funded. We got a little shot on the arm from the state, as we all know. If we want to divide the remaining 73% amongst, say, the next four years, I understand we can't do all of these roads overnight, especially considering we have to permit them and everything and design them, then we will, at budget time, probably want to look at about, not exact math here, Mike, but pretty close, 11,132,500 per year for four years. So again, 11,132,500 if we can, anyway, coming up at budget season, I hope everybody will consider that, so. Thank you.
Is that Mr. Brown's marching orders? Is that what we're doing?
No, sir. No, ma'am, no, ma'am. All right, thank you. I just wanted to put that math out there, so.
Yes, I appreciate that, Mr. Young. Yeah, so we are going to be looking at a capital line item in the upcoming budget. I just don't know what that number is yet. What the $8 million does is allows our Public Works folks to get started on every project and keep moving things forward as we continue to solve this. So I appreciate you doing the math. From what I saw, your math is correct and we will be looking in that direction.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? Yes, assembly person, McKee?
Yeah, last time we met, we talked about that 10 million and it was reducing that the bond by by 10 million. Is this, is this going to be applied the same way?
Through the mayor to Ms. McKee. So we took 8.5 million of that $10 million grant and it applied to this bond package. This 8 million will be applied to that, which is where Mr. Young's getting the 27% funded. So that'll give you 16.5 million of the 61.1 million that we're looking for. So it will get us, it'll allow us to move the projects forward and we're going to continue to look at, how do we develop funding options for this that do not involve taking on new debt?
All right, thanks.
Any further discussion? Okay, is there any objection? Hearing no objection, the legislation passes. The next item on our agenda is audience participation. Anyone in the audience is welcome to come and address the assembly on any matter that's, whether it's on the agenda or not. And you're limited to three minutes. And Caleb, do we have anybody online for audience participation? Why? Okay, so in, have they, they haven't hit stars three yet? Oh, okay. So the person that's online, if you hit star three, please to let Caleb know that you are interested in testifying. And so I'll come back now to the audience here. Is there anyone in the audience? I have Kelly Dixon that has signed up.
Good evening. My name is Kelly Dixon, D I C K S O N. And I'm speaking in regards to the Burma Road Tunnel, where you felt the need to spend nearly a million dollars on a tunnel for a road that has traveled so little, it is still dirt and gravel. When in contrast, the Alaska Department of Transportation and Public Facilities website states that the Knick Goosebake Road has a fatal accident rate that is nearly four times the national average. So how many safety tunnels has the Borough installed on the Knick Goosebake Road? You are also perpetuating a false claim that the Iditarod Trail crossed our family homestead. I provided the assembly members with the collection of historical data, which helps us locate the 1908 Goodwin Trail and the 1912 Giddings realignment. The Alaska Road Commission documented two trails which connected Knick to Susitna Station. The first location was in 1908 by Walter Goodwin. In 1910, Mr. Goodwin made the final location. The 1911 Alaska Road Commission Journal states, and I quote, "Route 28, new connect to Susitna Winter Trail approximately 50 miles. This route will accommodate about the same travel as Route 19. The present location is nearly a direct tangent between Knick and Susitna Station. A very circuitous route has been followed between these points in the past. And the new line will be a much shorter route owing to the swampy nature of the area crossed. It was found advisable to delay construction on this route until after the freeze-up, clearing 5.5 miles, average width eight feet, $440 spent. An article in the Alaska Yukon Magazine published in July 1911 contains a detailed account of Walter Goodwin's trip from Nome to Seward. It also has a map illustrated by Mr. Goodwin himself. It shows a trail crossing just under the northeastern bend of the Little Sioux River and then crossing a huge lake. That huge lake is Big Lake. Big Lake has nearly everything, including a claim to the Iditarod Trail. The 1912 Alaska Road Commission Journal states, and I quote, "Route 28, connect to Susitna Trail approximately 35 miles. At present, travel follows a long and winding trail made by natives. No work has been done on this route." So the 50 mile route was originally a native Alaskan trail that was adopted by the Road Commission. It was already there in use. You had a safety point with the native villages at Knick, Big Lake, Red Shirt Lake, and Susitna Thank you. Please preserve our history accurately.
Thank you. Anyone else in the audience that would like to address the assembly? Okay, oh, nobody. Caleb, okay. So with that, then I will close audience participation. The next item is our consent agenda. Again, does the assembly have anything they want to pull from the consent agenda? No? Okay, so Madam Clerk, then please read the consent agenda into the record.
Resolution 22004, a resolution declaring the appointment of the Magnus-Susitna Borough Assembly Districts out of compliance with the standards of AS 2920060A and AM 22002, awarded bid number 2206B to Anchorage Striping LLC in the contract amount of $1,498,810 for crack sealing services from 2022 through 2024.
Deputy Mayor?
I move to approve the consent agenda as read into the record by the clerk.
Is there any objection to the acceptance of the consent agenda? Okay, hearing none, the consent agenda is approved. We are now into unfinished business. Madam Clerk, would you read the legislation into the record?
Ordinance 2140 and ordinance amending MSP 2.08060A compensation for the mayor.
The main motion is on the floor. Is there any objection? I mean, any discussion, sorry. He's got, yes, assembly personnel.
Through the mayor, this is starting to get kind of long in the tooth from the original McKee that proposed it. I would just say I oppose this when it first came before us and it's nothing personal. You know, when I'm out in my district, people talk about better roads, better schools, more jobs. No one said start with paying our elected officials more. And even though I don't think 30,000 is a lot for the hours that folks put in, there's no evidence that 50,000 is going to get us a different quality of candidate or, and there's no additional requirements. So I just don't see the, you know, benefit to the citizens of the Borough by paying for more. And I think it sends a bad message when we're trying to hold the line to pay more. So again, no offense to the current mayor, I opposed this with the previous mayor and I would oppose it with other folks because if we're going to pay more, we need to get something for that. And I appreciate all the work that you're doing.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor?
I move to strike 50,000 in all lines and replace it with 65,000 and speak to it. So 65,000 is the recommendation of the Salary and Emoluments Board. And my, I had recommended that we send it to the board to review since that's the typical process and I didn't think we should send it arbitrarily and that was their recommendation. So we already adopted that recommendation in regards to planning and platting and I think we should adopt it for the mayor's salary.
Discussion on the amendment, change it to 65,000? Yes, assembly person.
So when we went over this in the beginning, and I know that it was just a starting point for me, but I'd made a motion to make the amount, I believe it was like 70,500 and something, I went right down to the cent. And what that number was, it reflected the average wage of every employee at the Matsu Borough combined, is how I came to that. And all of them worked very hard, but I, from, I could, I could see what the mayor's position be in a full-time position. I don't know that it is, I'm not the mayor, but I could see where it could be easily. And that's where I came to that number. All of the numbers since then have been slightly less. So I could see where Jesse's coming from on this and I would support him on that just because this, this is still about eight or nine percent less than what I had put forth in the salaries in the Emoluments Board. They exist for a reason. You know, inflation, a lot of other reasons. I don't remember the, I don't know the last time it was updated. I imagine it was a long time ago. But anyways, I would support Jesse's amendment just because of that, so that's all I got.
Any other discussion? Okay, is there a, sorry, do we have, okay, assembly personnel?
I would oppose this for the same reasons and, you know, I'm not swayed by the Salary and Emoluments Commission because there was some circular logic there. They, if you look at what they said to us, they, they got the message from us that we wanted additional requirements for the mayor. This comes with no additional requirements. And taking it from, you know, there was also a suggestion that we raise the assembly salaries. Nobody's proposing that. So again, we don't get any bang for our buck. We get people serve in these positions because, hopefully because they want to serve the public. So I'd pose 65, I'd pose So I'd pose 65, I'd pose 50, nothing was broke when this was proposed, and we shouldn't fix it, if it's not broke.
Okay, further discussion? Okay, is, I guess there is objection to the motion to change it to 65, so Madam Clerk, I guess then we will vote, right? So if everybody a vote, yes would change it to 65, no would leave it at the, what do I get paid?
At 50,000.
Fifty, yeah.
Right now it's suggested 50.
Okay. Okay, is everybody voting?
There we go. It passed with Assemblymember Hale, and Nowers opposed.
Okay, thank you. So, and let's see, then we need to, do we need to move on the main motion, or?
We need to act on the main motion unless there's no debate.
Okay, is there any other discussion on the main motion as amended? Okay, hearing none, is there any objection then to the main motion? I'm sorry. Oh, yes, Assemblywoman Nowers, go ahead, did you?
I just have objection, if we're going to, I thought that's what you were asking for.
Yeah, okay. So if you, if the Assembly will go ahead and vote, a yes vote would pass the main motion at 65,000, and a no vote would object to that motion being passed. Everybody voting?
It has passed with Assemblymember Sumner, Hale, and Nowers opposed.
Okay, all ready? So that is passed, we do not have any vetoes. The next item then is the introductions for the public hearing.
Introduction for public hearing on January 18, 2022 is ordinance 22-009.
Okay. All right, but is, oh, did you do the resolution on there, too?
Oh.
Yeah.
With the accompanying Resolution 22-005, thank you, Madam Mayor.
Yeah, you're welcome. Let's see, is, we don't need a staff report? Okay.
Assemblymember Sumner just needs to move it.
Yep.
I move to introduce the legislation as read into the record by the clerk and set the public hearing for January 18, 2022.
Okay, is there any discussion? Is there any objections to setting this forth for the public hearing? Okay, hearing none, and the legislation is introduced. The next item is on vacancy report. Deputy Mayor, will you move, please?
I move to approve the mayor's recommendations as follows, Agricultural Advisory Board, Adam Jenske, Animal Care and Regulation Board, Georgia Nazovic, sorry if I got that wrong, Borough Area School Site Selection Committee, Tom Bergy, Jubilee Underwood, James Hart, Labor Relations Board, Shirley Ekelakcock, Local Emergency Planning Committee, Simon Brown, Tracy Loscar, Planning Commission, Doug Glenn, Plating Board, Lynn McCabe.
Okay, is there any discussion? Is there any objections to the vacancy report being accepted? Okay, okay, so then the vacancy report is approved. Is there any other new business? I don't think we have any referrals, right? And there are no reconsiderations, correct, ma'am? And, yeah, we're going to make a record here almost. But even though we're joking about that, we want to be sure that there's ample opportunity all the time for either the Assembly or the public to give us their input. So we did sort of have some jokes about how soon we could get through all of this tonight, and they'd sent me a pretty tight schedule, I said I didn't know if I could talk that fast or not, but we never want to undermine the public process, so just, even though we're kidding and laughing about it, but I think almost everybody, you know, has other things on their mind. I know some of the Assembly people still don't have electricity as, and both for investments as their personal use, and so we just appreciate all of the Assembly coming out and making the additional effort to be here. So with that, then we will, and we are not going to have the executive session unless something has changed in the last 40 minutes, okay? So we'll go now to the mayor and Assembly, and Assemblymember McKee, we will take any kind of comments you'd like to say. No, okay? No? Yes?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor, I just wanted to say that I was opposed to the mayor's raise before, with the last mayor, so it wasn't any reflection on you.
Well, that's okay, then, I'll be sure you get pizza next time.
I just want to wish everybody a Happy New Year, Merry Christmas. I've been away at the slope for the last six weeks, so I'm just trying to catch up on everything, and thanks for understanding.
Thank you. Assemblyperson Mayor, you have comments, sir?
Just, everybody stay safe, and prayers for everyone.
Amen, amen. You have one more comment, you want to do it now?
It's up to you.
Go, go.
Sorry.
It's easy for me, then, to be sure, instead of trying to go back, oh, let's see, we missed somebody.
Yeah, so I just had one quick update, because one of the things we're super mindful of is the need to communicate with the public. So I meant to throw in some statistics to the earlier report, but yesterday's press conference, I thought was really valuable, I appreciate the National Weather Service and MEA participating, it really rounded it out in terms of providing a good update to the public. I wanted to share with you, I talked to a reporter from ABC News today, so this actually went national, and there's actually a national article about it, and she explained, because I caught to her after she published the article, because we were busy, and she, when I talked to her, she said, "Oh, I largely wrote the article from what you have online." So she had watched the press conference and garnered material from our website and Facebook, and was able to write an article, so, and she felt pretty comfortable with that. Turns out, she's a Palmerite and a Colony High grad, so I thought that was pretty cool, she was living in Tennessee currently. But what I wanted to share, Stefan Himmann shared this with me, is since yesterday morning, when we did the press conference, our Facebook page, that has had 13,000 views, over 13,000 views of that press conference, and YouTube is another, over 6,000 views. So that's pretty significant in a 24-hour period, so, and tonight's update here at the Assembly was obviously meant to update you on the Assembly, but also to update the public again, so we're really trying to be diligent about keeping the public informed of what is happening and what we're hearing, because we understand literally when you're in the dark, that it can be challenging. So I just wanted to share that with you, to let you know that there is some followership and views that are taking place, and just to make you aware of that, so thank you, Madam Mayor.
That certainly has to set another record, right? I mean...
I think it's significant, for sure.
Yeah, I don't know, I'm looking down there to see if Stefan is smiling his head, or no, he's saying he didn't know, okay.
At least he's still awake.
Yeah. Madam Clerk, did you have any additional? Okay, Assemblyperson Yonk, you have some additional comments, sir?
Yeah, thanks for keeping the meeting short, I know everybody's got family and friends they probably want to go check on. I did not know that the EMS or the fire would go and remove trees, we've done that for a few people in their driveways already, so I'll be sharing that on my Facebook page when we leave here, and then the rides to the shelter, I hope everybody gets that information out there, because there's a good chance people could use that service, so that's all I got, thanks.
Assemblyperson Nowers?
Thank you, I just also want to express my appreciation for that press conference, I think it was 15 minutes, and it hit the roads and the weather and the schools and high points, and I was able to share that with folks, and they were very appreciative of it, so that was, that was great to do, and I hope everybody stays safe and gets their power back on.
Deputy Mayor?
Yeah, I'm glad to hear that we're getting the information out there so effectively, maybe we can monetize our YouTube channel and help pay for some of these disaster responses. Yeah, and I did not, as Assemblymember Nowers pointed out, I did not bring forward a resolution raising the Assembly salary, I don't, at least when I sent the request to the, or I recommended we send the request to Salary and Emoluments, that was not included in my recommendation, so, or at least I didn't think it was, so I would oppose that, but thank you.
Clerk, Madam Clerk?
Just to clarify to the Assembly, the salaries in Emoluments Commission is supposed to review all of those salaries every two years, however, we haven't had a board, so we finally put one together, and that's why they reviewed everyone.
So I guess it wasn't a big promotion then for you to get. So, again, thank you, hopefully, if you don't have electricity, maybe when you go home, you'll have electricity, which will be, we were out for 24 hours, and last night at nine o'clock, we did a very happy dance, and if you didn't hear the shout, it was because you probably had your TV on or watching something else, so. With that, I'll adjourn the meeting.